I'd like to call the meeting of the Upper Morland Township, a regular meeting, May 1st, 2023, to order. First thing would be a moment of silence. We stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which sustains it, one nation, united in all, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me take role.
Ward one. Ward two.
Here.
Ward three.
Here.
Ward four.
Here.
Ward five.
Here.
Ward six and ward seven. Mr. President, all commissioners are in attendance with the exception of Commissioner Valenza.
And just for announcement, Mr. Valenza has been to the hospital. He's sick. He's doing well. Should be back for the next meeting. Okay. First, for our regular meeting. First, Chief Block, is it your birthday? I think we should sing "Happy Birthday" to Chief Block.
All right.
Ready? Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Chief Block. Happy birthday to you. Your detective department's brutal on you.
Well, now you're writing them out.
They didn't say which one. There's a bunch of them. Okay. Chief Glassman, would you come up and introduce our new candidate?
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you very much. It's my honor and privilege tonight to present to you firefighter John Townsend. We're going to swear him in as a full-time member of the Upper Morland Township Fire Department. His wife, Megan, is going to come hold the Bible. But first, I'll give you a little background. He resides in Warminster, Pennsylvania. He graduated from Bishop McDevitt High School. Since 2002, he has been a supervisor of Second Alarmers Rescue Squad. And since 2002, he has been a part-time member of the Upper Morland Township Fire Department. From 2012 to 2015, he was part of Tactical Combat Casualty Care as an instructor at the Davis Defense Group. His certifications include Emergency Management Technician, Firefighter 1, Firefighter 2, Fire Inspector 1, Inspector 2, Fire Instructor 1, Fire Officer 1 and 2, Fire Investigator, Fire Department Incident Safety Officer, Driver Pump Operator, Pump Operations 1 and 2, Rescue Practices, Hazmat Technician, Hazmat Operations, and Basic Life Support Provider. I'd like to call Judge Leo up to administer the oath of office. And one thing that has been passed through the fire service, they say the greatest act of vows is when you raise your right hand and take the oath, and everything else is in the line of duty. So, Judge.
Okay. I.
I, John Townsend.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And that I will uphold and obey.
And I will uphold and obey.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of firefighter, EMT.
Of firefighter, EMT.
Of the township of Upper Morland.
Of the township of Upper Morland.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
And without consideration.
And without consideration.
Of a person's race.
Of a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap or disability.
Handicap or disability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Good luck.
If you would like to stay there in the family, if you would like to come up for a picture with this.
John, you want to come up?
First picture is the family. Second picture, you can have the department. Then the third one will be with commissioners. Let's get out of the way.
Guys, firefighters, let's go.
How you doing, man?
Next presentation, Chief Block.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you. It's a wonderful evening, obviously, for the emergency services in Upper Morland Township. And I think what you're going to see throughout the evening here is what we stress is the teamwork that makes things happen so well in this township. So at this time, I'd like to call Officer Craig Bald and Detective Sergeant Todd Smith up to the podium, please. Gentlemen. So there's some exceptional police work that we want to recognize this evening. And if you'll indulge me, this goes back to October of 2022 where it started. So back on October 3rd, 2022, Officer Bald was on duty. He was on patrol when he was alerted by one of our ALPR systems, which is the automated license plate reader, that a stolen vehicle had come into the township on Morland Road. So Officer Bald attempted to stop the vehicle. The vehicle initially did not want to stop. It was 4:30 in the afternoon, so I don't have to tell everybody. Traffic conditions were very, very heavy, and that assisted us with safely getting the vehicle stopped. So Officer Bald had the vehicle stopped. Several other vehicles responded, police officers responded, including myself. I arrived at the scene. Officer Bald had already set up the scene itself. It was textbook at the time. So what happened next was very interesting. So Officer Bald, after he stopped the vehicle, located five people in the vehicle. There were two adults and three juveniles. During the search of the vehicle, which was reported stolen and confirmed, Officer Bald recovered a Glock 17 handgun that was in the vehicle. It was equipped with an extended magazine concealed under the seat of the vehicle. All five occupants of the vehicle denied possession of the firearm or any knowledge thereof. At that point, at the time, it was Detective Smith, who's now Detective Sergeant Smith, arrived at the scene to assist and process the evidence in the vehicle, as well as the individuals that we had stopped. He secured DNA from the handgun and as well as DNA samples from all the occupants of the vehicle. The driver was arraigned on vehicle theft and firearms charges, released on bail through the county system. When his preliminary hearing came about, the firearms charge was subsequently dismissed by one of the local magistrates, not the magistrate that's here this evening, for the record. So whereas on February of 2023, the DNA that was submitted by Detective Sergeant Smith to the Pennsylvania State Police Crime Lab in Harrisburg, information was received that it was forensically linked, the Glock 17 that was found in the vehicle, to two shootings in the city of Philadelphia, as well as a homicide in the city of Philadelphia. The homicide occurred two days prior to Officer Bald stopping this vehicle. The DNA results also forensically linked one of the occupants of the car to the firearm itself that was found in there. As a result of this, our detective bureau contacted the Philadelphia homicide unit. They advised them on the evidence that we had. And based on the traffic stop of the stolen car and the forensic investigation, the Philadelphia Police Department was able to charge three of the occupants from the vehicle with the murder of an individual that occurred in the city of Philadelphia. The homicide detectives from Philadelphia stated, "Without the excellent police work with these officers, this homicide would have remained unsolved." So this evening, we want to recognize and thank and have it resolved by the board that the Upper Morland Township Board of Commissioners commends these officers for their exceptional performance in capturing these violent perpetrators and maintaining the safety and security for our community. Gentlemen, well done. Congratulations.
For the presentation of life-saving proclamation.
Would be Chief Glassman. He and Assistant Chief Davidson.
Good evening again, commissioners. It gives me distinct honor and privilege to give this recognition. I know Chief Block and I come before you each month with a whole bunch of numbers and facts and figures, and we talk about great things that we're doing together in the township to make it safer for all the residents. Well, tonight, we're going to put names and faces behind the facts and figures and numbers to show you a true life-saving incident that occurred right here in the township. And they say the greatest thing you can give is life. And that's what happened in this particular case. And tonight, we have with us Ms. Tammy Remig. Can you come up, please, Tammy? So Tammy was visiting Miller's Owl House when she had a sudden cardiac arrest on the evening of March 16th. So I'm going to announce the people that are going to get recognized for her incident. It's civilian Kathleen Holzerman. Come on up, Kathleen. Stand up here. The firefighters were firefighter Michael Cox, firefighter John Townsend, firefighter Joseph Doherty, Police Lieutenant James Kelly, Police Officer Thomas Leahy, Second Alarmers Rescue Squad Supervisor Assistant Chief Rich Garrett, Paramedic Ron Wilson, Paramedic Robert Hentz, EMT Jeff Tarman, EMT Russ Bogley.
Make your way around the front here, and I'll read off the proclamation.
This is a life-saving proclamation from the commissioners from the township of Upper Morland, and it reads as follows. Whereas on March 16th, 2023, at 8:42 PM, members from the Upper Morland Township Fire and Police Departments, along with Second Alarmers Rescue Squad, were dispatched to Miller's Owl House at 2300 Eastern Road for an unconscious person. Whereas members were met by a civilian later identified as registered nurse Kathleen Holzerman, who had started CPR on an unconscious victim, later identified as Tammy Remig. Whereas Kathleen Holzerman, firefighters Michael Cox, John Townsend, Officer in Charge Firefighter Joe Doherty, Upper Morland Township Police Lieutenant James Kelly, Police Officer Thomas Leahy, and Second Alarmers Rescue Squad Supervisor Assistant Chief Rich Garrett, paramedics Ron Wilson and Robert Hentz, EMT Jeff Tarman and Russ Bogley, continued all possible life-saving efforts available to resuscitate the victim, including CPR, AED, and drug intervention. Whereas through the professional application of training and experience, along with excellent teamwork, the victim regained pulses and breathing. The victim was subsequently transported to Abington Hospital, where she was further treated and released. Now for, be it proclaimed, members of Upper Morland Township Fire Department, Police Department, Second Alarmers, and civilian Kathleen Holzerman saved the life of Ms. Tammy Remig and are recognized for the heroic efforts to the victim of the community, to the victim and the community. This proclamation is presented by the Upper Morland Township Board of Commissioners on the first day of May, 2023. Congratulations and thank you very much. Chief Davidson also has a recognition from the Second Alarmers Rescue Squad. He's going to read off.
Thank you, Chief. It's always a pleasure when we can come to one of these presentations. And in addition to the township proclamation, have an American Heart Association Chain of Survival Award. So several years ago, the American Heart Association came to the realization that there's no one factor that plays into the successful resuscitation of a cardiac arrest victim, and it's multiple factors that go into it. And the chain that they define is early recognition of the emergency and access to care, where Ms. Holzerman came in and recognized that her friend was having an emergency, was in cardiac arrest, and immediately began CPR. Early CPR is the next phase of the chain, followed by early notification of the EMS system, early defibrillation, early advanced care, and post-care at the hospital. So what you see before you this evening is the first couple links of that chain, all critical to the great outcome and success. And just anecdotally, usually we'll wait a couple weeks and we'll call the hospital to do some follow-up. And about two weeks after the incident, Chief Glassman reached out and said, "Hey, can you see how she's doing?" And by the time I called, she'd already been discharged and was home. So a very successful outcome. And again, recognition from Second Alarmers and the American Heart Association with Chain of Survival Awards for everybody here this evening. Thank you.
Yeah, make sure you can see us, and we can see you, okay?
So I don't really think that was enough clapping for all of this greatness for tonight. So one more.
Thank you. Here we go.
Thank you very much. Fun stuff.
As the mass act starts.
There are a lot more great agenda items forthcoming for the evening. If you would like to stay, it's going to be lots of fun.
Who wants another bar in Upper Morland?
This happened a few years ago. Doesn't seem like enough. Yeah, it seems like not enough.
Get the watch.
Close the doors.
Okay, next, we will proceed to a public hearing. Public hearing 1962. We need a motion to open the hearing.
Motion of a public hearing 1962.
Okay, we got a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Sean, would you take it from here?
Sure. Thank you very much, President McThatchridge. I'm going to mark some exhibits for the record here for this public hearing. T1 will be a copy of the application of the intermunicipal liquor license transfer. T2 will be a copy of the advertisement of this public hearing. Just real quick, right here, there'll be an opportunity for a brief, I see a representative from Olive Garden here. They want to make a brief presentation, very, very brief, about the intermunicipal liquor license transfer. And then an opportunity for board questions, opportunity for public comment. Then the board can close the hearing if they so choose, or if they want more information, to continue it to a later date. There is later an agenda item further on with a resolution confirming the transfer, if that's what the board so chooses to do, under other items, I believe, 4A. So at this time, is there a representative from Olive Garden here?
Yes, Greg Zoller.
Want to come up?
Could I just tell you my name?
It's Greg. Last name is Zoller. S is in Sam, Z is in zebra, A-L-L-A-R.
Why don't you swear him in real quick?
Sounds like a testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Correct.
Thank you.
Before I get into my presentation, I'd like to have.
Sure. We'll mark this as T3.
T3.
So it's right here.
Yep. What I would like to have marked is, I guess, T4. I have copies of the letters that we sent to the adjoining property owners, along with the certified mail.
Sounds great.
Please see.
We'll keep it. Thank you.
My name's Greg Zoller. I'm an attorney with Flaherty &amp; O'Hara. And I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Olive Garden Holdings LLC. We're here to request that Upper Morland Township approve a resolution permitting the intermunicipal transfer of a liquor license from outside the municipality to within it in pursuit to revise Liquor Code Title 47, Section 461b3, to be used by Olive Garden at 2402 Eastern Road, the former Brickhouse location. The license is being transferred from the Olive Garden currently located in Abington Township. As you know, the Liquor Code permits the PLCB to approve the transfer of a license from any other municipality in Montgomery County to within any other municipality, so long as you, the receiving municipality, issue a resolution approving the transfer. In order for you to make a decision on our request, let me provide you with some background on Olive Garden Holdings LLC. Olive Garden Holdings is a wholly owned subsidiary of Darden Restaurants, Inc., a publicly traded company headquartered in Orlando, Florida. Darden is the world's largest casual restaurant company. Through subsidiaries, Darden owns and operates over 1,800 restaurants in North America and employs approximately 157,000 employees. They have a number of concepts, which I'm sure you are all familiar with. Olive Garden, Cheddar Scratch Kitchen, Bahama Breeze, Capital Grill, Longhorn Steakhouse, Season 52, and Eddie V's. There are 875 Olive Garden restaurants in North America, with 37 of those restaurants being located in Pennsylvania. Olive Garden restaurants are family-friendly, full-service casual dining restaurants featuring a wide variety of Italian dishes, which include the unlimited salad and breadsticks. As you can see in Section 7 of the handout, Olive Garden menu features assorted delicious pasta entries. All items are available for both on- and off-premises consumption. Olive Garden is open for both lunch and dinner. Tab 1 of the handout shows a photo of what the exterior will look like, while Tab 6 contains photos of what your prototypical Olive Garden would look like. We will have no live music, no takeout. The hours of operation will be Sunday through Thursday from 11:00 The hours of operation will be Sunday through Thursday from 11:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m. and on Fridays and Saturdays from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. The property itself will be around 6,501 square feet. It will be able to accommodate 160 patrons at one time. There are 100 parking spaces on the site itself, which includes both regular parking and handicap parking. They anticipate hiring approximately 100 employees. The alcohol that will be served will be a complement to the food, will not be the main attraction. Alcohol is served at all Olive Garden locations, which make for a consistent product nationwide. The percentage of alcohol sales as a percentage of total sales for 2022 totaled 5.5%. All bartenders and all seller servers will undergo the ramble, which is responsible alcohol service training offered by the Pennsylvania Control Board and Darden's in-house extensive alcohol policy program. Olive Garden is a responsible owner making a significant investment that needs to be protected by responsible management and well-trained employees. And for these reasons, we would request that you issue a resolution approving the intermunicipal transfer of a restaurant liquor license to Upper Moreland Township for use by Olive Garden in its new location. And if anybody has any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions from the board?
Answer all my questions. No takeout?
What's that?
You said no takeout.
No takeout there.
One question. 5.5% of what? Pro sales?
Of their total, of their total sales, only 5.5% is based on alcohol sales for on-premises consumption. I have no questions on it. We're swapping a restaurant for a restaurant. And you're local, we've seen you already, right around the corner in Abington. Are there any questions from the general public? Yes, ma'am. You gotta come up to the microphone.
You need to come up and say your name and address.
Not really a question. My name's Jennifer Herring. Jennifer Herring, H-A-R-I-N-G. I'm one of those that got the certified letter. They are in my backyard. And I don't have a question, I just wanted to see for the record that I am fine. And actually, I've spoken to most of my neighbors, we are fine about this, as long as you abide by the law. We're good. We do have, later on during the public agenda, I will have questions about the signage, but as for the alcohol policy, it's really no different than all the bars that are in there, so we're pretty good with it.
And just so you're aware, the signage goes to a different board, a zoning board that will be on a Thursday night. Okay. Any other questions? Amen? With that. Motion to close it? We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? Aye. Okay. We'll get voted on later. Okay, our last presentation, single-use plastic ban.
Can I plug my computer in with this cord? Yeah?
Wizard of Oz listens in and switches.
There we go. Great. Is it this mic? Oh, yeah, here we go. Okay, well, good evening. Thank you, everyone, for inviting us. I'm Suzette Monley, and I'm an Upper Moreland resident for the past 30 years. So this presentation is provided by the Upper Moreland EAC and is intended to inform the Board of Commissioners about solutions and concerns regarding a proposed single-use plastic ordinance, which incorporates the studied and successful ban and fee model, and provide additional recommendations for timing, implementation, and enforcement. So I know all of you are, most of you have been discussing this for about the past two years, and you've participated in presentations on the harms of plastic, and the EIC has conducted surveys and educated the community. So tonight, we won't backtrack. We'll touch on a few key points of plastic pollution and look to address voice concerns and pave a path to move this forward. So we know that plastic bags clog stormwater infrastructure, increasing damages from flooding. We know they tangle recycling machinery, increasing labor costs and costs to our community. And we know that addressing plastic pollution is fighting climate change. They are made from fossil fuels, and if plastics were a country, they would be the world's fifth-largest emitter of greenhouse gases. And plastics don't go away or break down into the environment over time. It breaks apart into smaller and smaller pieces called microplastics. And they are particles smaller than five millimeters. It's about the size of a grain of sand. And microplastics are the little bits of plastics that are virtually everywhere. We ingest five grams of plastic, or about the weight of a plastic bag, every week, regardless of where you live. So we've provided a QR code here to a study by Penn Environment in 2021 that found microplastics in every waterway studied in PA, as you can see on this map. So where do the microplastics we ingest come from? Well, they've been found in drinking water, much more so in single-use plastic water bottles. It's been found in beer, it's been found in honey, it's in fish, it's in the air we breathe in, it's in seafood, especially anything you eat whole, like mussels or shrimp. And we are all aware of our local issues with PFOS, the forever chemical in our water, which stem from the naval base using firefighting phones. And those chemicals seeped into the soil and the water, and it caused many in our area to incur serious health issues, including cancer. Plastic is a forever chemical, just like PFOS. It seeps into our soil and water through our landfills, our litter, and ingesting microplastic that break down in the environment. So many plastics are treated with PFOS, and those chemicals leach into our food and into our bodies. And this is a picture showing an old tradition in Mormonster, which is right down the road. Kids are being sprayed with firefighting foam, which we now understand to be laden with PFOS. So thankfully, our state senator, Maria Collette, and our U.S. Senator, Madeleine Dean, continue to fight for clean water for all of us on a state and federal level. And the chemicals in plastics are endocrine disruptors, which trick the body into thinking they are hormones. And under normal circumstances, hormones carry messages that act like on-off switches. Common hormones are estrogen, testosterone, and human growth hormone. And they're, their presence in our bodies is like a dance that is very carefully timed. And these endocrine disruptors upset this dance even in very low doses, and they affect important systems all over our body. They impact the hormones that regulate our appetite and metabolism, they cause diabetes, high blood pressure, obesity, and heart disease, they can disrupt brain development, causing lower IQ, ADHD, and autism spectrum disorders, and they can cause cancers, especially breast, prostate, testicular, all of which are on the uptick. So you might ask, why and why now? Well, another way to frame this is, what took us so long? On average, Americans get 12 minutes of usage of a plastic bag before throwing them in the garbage, where they don't decompose for at least 450 years. Plastic bags are not recyclable. All plastic ever made still exists today. So first, our landfill. Our excessive waste and reliance on plastic has a price. The most dangerous cost is to the health of ourselves, our kids, and our neighbors. Identifying the exact price tag of a nano or microplastic is difficult. Although a plastic bag can be as cheap as one cent, the city of San Francisco determined that each plastic bag costs the city 17 cents in cleanup costs. One cost that can be measured is at our landfill. So all of our plastic bags, film, straws, and styrofoam end up in the Lanchester landfill in Chester County, or the Fairless Hills landfill in Bucks County. The landfill director at Lanchester strongly supports reducing the use of plastic films because of the extra efforts by her crew and money to hire outside help it takes in order to manage it. The landfill now has in its budget money for large fence-like objects to catch flyaway film and money to pay an outside company to collect all that flies over the fences. The second is our area, southeastern PA. Our neighbors are taking action regarding plastics in their community, and we'll touch on that next. And the third is public opinion. The community supports reducing plastic pollution with a bag on plastic, with a ban on plastic bags. Our state representative, Maria Collette, is also supportive of action on single-use plastics, but she needs local help to build state action. Nine states and 77 countries have already passed some sort of full or partial restriction on single-use plastics. New Jersey, New York, and Delaware, all around us, have restrictions on single-use plastics. According to an equation from Penn Environment, which factors average single-use plastic bags per person per year, shows that these seven bans are reducing approximately 4,000 tons in combined weight of plastic bags for Pennsylvania. And using their equation, if we have approximately 26,000 residents in Upper Moreland, our township would be removing approximately 9.5-plus million single-use plastic bags every year. So as a reminder, these single-use plastic bags cannot be recycled in curbside trash or recycling with our current haulers. Fifteen municipalities have passed single-use plastic bag bans, many of them are our neighbors. And here are our neighbors currently taking action. We actually need to move Shelton Ham onto the previous slide, they just passed their ban a few days ago. Lower Marion is voting in big may, Upper Marion's to follow, and they're all around us. Abington, Jenkentown, Hatboro, Upper Dublin, Upper Gwinnett are all looking to ban plastic bags. This is a map that shows all the municipalities that have either passed or are working on bans. You can see Upper Moreland in purple, and we're surrounded by that. So this is the proposed ordinance for Upper Moreland Township, that businesses no longer distribute single-use plastic bags or polystyrene food containers, and plastic straws are distributed on an as-needed-as-requested basis. There's a 10-cent fee for paper bags, and the commercial establishments would keep all those monies. We adopt this ASAP, it would go into effect with enforcement beginning in September of this year. And there would be exemptions that apply to certain plastics deemed necessary for business operations, such as bulk, item packaging, wrapping meats or fish or prepared foods, or packaging containing multiple bags, like food storage bags, garbage bags, or pet waste bags. You might say, well, why not switch to paper bags with no fee? Well, paper bags, while easier to recycle than plastic, require four times the energy to produce and may involve the use of environmentally harmful chemicals and fertilizers. The goal is to reduce plastic waste through reuse. We do not want to replace the 9.5 million single-use plastic bags with paper bags. So why is the ban and fee combo so important? So according to a study in 2018 published in the American Economic Journal on Economic Policy, fees are more effective than bonuses at curtailing the use of plastic bags. So looking at data from various grocery stores, it found that a five-cent fee on disposable bags generated a 42% decrease in plastic bag usage. But a five-cent bonus for using reusable bags had almost no impact on consumer habits. And in 2019, a study was conducted in England on their bag fee, which showed that all age, gender, and income groups in England substantially reduced their plastic bag usage within one month after the charge was introduced. And we have a local study, literally hot off the presses, just released a few days ago. It's a one-year study on the results of Philadelphia's plastic bag ban. And the study estimates that the ban led to the elimination of over 200 million plastic bags in the city in one year. And that's the equivalent of filling up City Hall with plastic bags every eight months. And the purpose of this study was to see the impact on consumer behavior. So there was a 93% reduction in plastic bag usage, huge win. The usage of reusable bags almost doubles from 21% to 41%, another big win. And the number of consumers not taking a bag at all tripled. But it shows the impact of not using a ban and fee model. Philly didn't impose a fee on bags. So the number of shoppers who use paper bags nearly tripled from 17% to 45%. It took three months for plastic bag usage to decrease in the city and remained steadily near zero for the remainder of the study. The results confirm what we already knew, that plastic bag bans are very effective on cutting down the use of single-use plastic bags. It also showed that with no fee to incentivize people to bring their own bag, paper bags do fill the void left by plastic. The number of customers bringing their own bag or not using any bag increased, but they were dwarfed by the increase in customers using single-use paper bags. We need a strong fee for it to be effective. So let's move on to enforcement. So the ordinance would be enforced with the same methods as any other ordinance. We would provide residents the opportunity to contact code enforcement with businesses that are not complying through a form on the township website. Townships that have enacted these bans are finding the large majority of businesses are complying without issue. The code enforcement citizen complaint form on our website would show the three steps the township will take for registered complaints. We will not accept anonymous complaints. The code enforcement officer visits the property. If a violation is found, a letter is sent to the property. And if action is not taken to remedy the situation, a citation is issued. Tridifern Township has a population of 31,000 people, a little bit larger than us, and a large business community. They have had three businesses ask for an exemption for a short period of time to use up bags and inventory, and they were smaller businesses. And to date, they've had three businesses that they spoke to about compliance, they did a friendly visit to remind them about the ban, and see if they needed assistance with complying. This is an example of a citizens complaint form for the website. We would create signage for businesses to post to inform the public, explaining the ordinance and the fee. We would set up a webpage on our township website with FAQs and downloadable materials. We have all the content for the website, educational materials, FAQs, and signage, which just needs updating for Upper Moreland. It's all ready to go with the permission to use Tridifern's materials, basically a copy and paste. We can offer Q&amp;A sessions for businesses to help educate them, and we can post reminders on Nextdoor and the Township Facebook page. Here's an example of a township notice. Here's an example for businesses to print and hang. And on our website FAQ page, we would provide a list of vendors for compliant bags. So the timing and implementation, we're recommending finalizing and approving an ordinance ASAP. We would phase in the approach after approval to educate businesses, allow people time to ask questions, and then we would propose enforcement of the ordinance to begin September 30th of 2023. Lastly, here's some comments from businesses and neighboring township surveys. Large chain stores already complying in other townships are just waiting for township-level support. And helping customers with reminders on doors, like, did you forget your bag? So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. We would respectfully ask you to vote on this ordinance, and I'd love to know who's in favor of reducing plastic waste in Upper Moreland.
Questions from the board?
Yeah.
Okay. First of all, thank you very much for being here, and thank you very much to the EAC for constantly following up on this particular topic and all things environmental that they do. I have a problem passing an ordinance that identifies something that's very dangerous and to the environment and overlooking things like what I've constantly said is, single-use bags that are large trash and garbage bags, single-use sandwich bags, single-use bottles that end up in trash. We have already an ordinance about recycling. And I can go pull it out of the trash, 20 plastic bags. And I can go pull it out of the trash, 20 plastic bags. Anyone who are going to say anything like that.
Just like like.
And we can recycle them. So I don't understand why this is not already at the state level, and what's the problem with getting it there? Why do some states have recycling bottle, five cents, 10 cents? You know, as a.
A bottle bill?
Yeah.
Right.
I think the impact on big box companies, you said.
They're already doing it.
They're okay with it. I did talk to a few of them. They'll just do what they have to do.
Yeah, well, it's already being done, so they know how to do it. It's not a question of how.
But it is an impact on smaller businesses. It costs money.
Yeah, so I guess I would say there's 77 countries and nine states and multiple townships that are already figuring it out for small businesses. I've owned a business in Philly for over 25 years. I know how to talk to those people. I'm happy to go talk to our local small businesses. They've already figured it out. So we're using best practices and what people have learned along the way. This isn't something that we can't figure out how to do it or how to support a certain-sized business. It's already happened.
Great topics, you know, but again, what's the plastic industry doing about this? What are they saying to us? Let me finish. You talked about PFOS.
Yeah.
And Madison Madeline Dean. Okay, the federal government put a lot of money out there to make our water safer by paying for water mains. They're still dumping millions of gallons of PFOS into our streams through bypass sewage plants because they're not treating it on-site. You identified all that litter? What are we doing about the litter? Why are we not writing littering fines?
So I think we have to start somewhere, right? So I think you should run for federal office, and you can help solve some of these issues.
Not happening.
Because I think that you'd probably give them a good run for their money, but we can't do nothing. Once you know these problems, you can't sit here and push the buck to someone else and say you do it. We have a responsibility in our constitution for clean air and clean water. So what are we doing about it as a township? It's already been shown to work in big, large cities that have way more problems than we do in our township. So I would say, yes, there's all of those things are issues. We have to start somewhere. You don't see Ziploc bags as much as you see single-use plastic bags hanging out in our trees, in our storm drains. It's all over the place, and we know they can't be recycled. It's a fact. It's not happening. So why don't we start somewhere? Why don't we start with something that's been proven to work and proven to have real impact on our communities, let alone the recycling machinery?
I got you.
Yeah.
Hundred percent. When we put our name on ordinance that says "single-use plastic," why can't I go into a supermarket and see a single-use plastic bag on the shelf that they're selling?
Because it's not part of the ordinance. That's part of the exception piece. So hey, I'm with you. I'd love to get rid of all of it, but we have to start somewhere.
Let's make that ordinance happen.
I don't believe you. I don't think you would go that far. I think we have to start somewhere. This has already been proven. We're not going to eliminate everything in one fell swoop.
It hasn't been proven that it reduces the microplastic in the streams.
If we eliminate 9.5 million single-use plastic bags in our community, there are less microplastics in our air, in our water, and in our soil. Fact.
And then the federal government's dumping millions of gallons.
Right, and so the state level needs us to pass on a local level to build the groundswell to give them the ability to push it through on this.
They don't need that. They can just pass it at the state. Why are they not? I want to know who's opposing it. What's the opposition at the state level for passing it?
Well, gosh, if we can't even get it passed on a local township level, I would think that it's magnified on a state level, right? So I'm not here equipped to say, here's all the reasons why Pennsylvania won't pass it. I'm saying there's a huge groundswell of townships in our area that are passing these like crazy, and it's all around us, and it's working. People aren't upset. People aren't complaining. We're helping people that need help with compliance. We're giving them all the information, all the vendors. It's working, and it's a step in the right direction.
I understand everything you're saying. But what I'm saying is, you know, we're taught to pass ordinances to craft this legislation, that it has to be able to plug in, and it doesn't make.
Plug into what?
Why can't I make an ordinance in Upper Moreland for my own gun laws? Why can't I? Don't answer it.
I'm not. I'm not. I'm not touching that one.
No, but that's just it, like.
What's your resistance? I can't quite.
The fact that it's, I do like the fact that it's uniform. If every community has the same ordinance, that's a good thing.
Yeah, it helps.
I don't like ordinances that are different here, and Horsham's got a different one, and Upper Dublin's got a different one. My resistance is that we pass it here, and it's not passed in another community. It has to be at the state level.
Do you want me to bring up the map that shows all the areas that are already passing it that are literally.
You have whole states that have passed.
Yeah, yeah.
So where's the opposition in Harrisburg?
Well, we can go, and we can chat with them. But first, we have to be able to show that we could actually do it locally.
Tell me the names, right here.
Yeah.
That's what I'm talking about.
I'm not here to pass it on a state level. I'm here to pass it in our township. This is where I've lived for 30 years. There's people here that don't want all this plastic pollution in our community when we know there's a viable solution to make it better.
I understand.
So I guess I would just ask, why can't we take that step? Why is this so difficult? We're not the first, and I hope to God we're not the last to pass it.
Why is the big celebration about getting rid of single-use plastic bags when we have all this other plastic?
Because we're taking a step to make it better. Is doing nothing better and sit around and we can all kind of bitch about it?
I'm not in favor of doing nothing. I'm in favor of pushing it to Harrisburg, identifying the plastic in general.
But that's not our ability here to push it to Harrisburg. I'm not standing in front of you trying to get something banned at a state level, just trying to get our little township of 26,000 people to think about the environment and what's polluting it.
Okay, so you did tell us that making it pass here is going to help Harrisburg.
Yeah, we've had 16 single-use plastic bag bans in the municipalities, and there's another 20 that are working on it. So when we get to this big number and we can say, hey, look, when the feds look at the state and the state looks at local, it's what's working. If we can show that it's working, it's a heck of a lot easier to pass it on a state level than, you know what, we didn't pass it because you guys did pass it. It doesn't really work.
I have a problem with it. I understand that it's a good concept. I have a problem with passing, putting my name on an ordinance and walking through a supermarket and seeing a single-use plastic bag on the shelf. I really do have a problem.
Okay, so is there enough support that we don't need your name on it? I'm not too smart. I just.
It's not that big.
I mean, that would get you what you want. If you don't want your name on it, I'm not saying it has to be. I just need enough people to pass it.
I tell that.
Yeah, so first off, thank you so much. I think you synthesized all this information beautifully, and I greatly appreciate the EAC finally coming out and putting together a tangible presentation for us, because this has been a debate on this dais for too long, in my opinion. I've spoken to Commissioner Spearing about this. He's in favor for it regardless of the points that he's making. His thing is, I want to go big. If I don't go big.
Me too. I'm with you. I'll go big with you.
Right. And my opinion on this is, we got to start small because we're seeing much larger federal-state issues getting pushed down into smaller levels. So if that's the road that our current democracy is taking, then let's show them that if that's what you want to do, then let's just take it from the small guy and keep pushing it up. I don't see any reason why we can't implement this starting tomorrow. We have peers and precedents all around us that we can jump into. I know one of the things that we've had a concern with, both on the board and in the administration, is how it's going to be overseen. I think that in passing the ordinance, you already have the big-box stores jumping in. So you've taken those off the table. They're going to do it anyway. I mean, if you go down the street now and you look at Sprouts, or you look at the Fresh Market.
They just did it on their own.
Yeah.
Sprouts did it without, yeah, they just did it on their own because they see the writing on the wall.
Home Depot does it all over the place. Lowe's does it, Walmart. They're the biggest offenders around here. The mom-and-pop shops, if we put it out there, they'll comply, and we will rely on our citizens to help us push this through. And we will help those businesses get over that hump.
Hundred percent.
Of the finances that is going to impact them.
In the long run, they'll make out better.
Exactly. I agree 100%. If there was a way that we could pass an ordinance that said, "All plastic items are illegal within this township," I would say, go for it. My baby daughter, who is seven months old, already has plastic in her. She was born with plastic in her because of her mother and her father.
Yep.
It's terrible.
Yeah, it's not right.
Right? So if there's anything we can do, I would love to do it. We know how people work. It's not going to, nothing that large is going to pass in the first try. But something that will pass is something that's targeted and focused and has a plan of action. And I think that this is the right time to do this. I think we have everything we need to do it, and I don't know why we're going to argue the point that we need to go bigger when we can start small and continuously grow upon that by showing that we can do something small to snowball into something larger. So I'm 100% for this. I would advocate for this any day of the week, and I appreciate all of your input and listening to me rant up here.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Please, we've got a lot to go through.
Yeah, great presentation. Thank you. I agree, Commissioner Spearing. I wish they would pass it at the state, but it's not going to happen in the foreseeable future. We know these chemicals are harmful. We know this reduces the plastic. So I am definitely in support of doing this.
Thank you.
I feel, oh, sorry.
Want to add something?
No, I was going to say, if we have anybody else, and we have a resident.
No, I would like to say something. We have to start small before we can crawl. Okay, I really believe that this presentation tonight brings awareness to what is really happening in the ecosystem of the world. We, as next consumers and generators, have to be aware that not only your baby, Anthony, but my great-grandkids, my kids, they want to exist in a world as plastic freight. So we have to have this happen immediately, not tomorrow, immediately. So I'm in favor of this.
Thank you.
Charles, anything?
I just say, yeah, let's do this, and then time to come, we can modify it, and add other types of plastics in other situations. It's going to be a cost to it, enforcement. It's going to be, you know, cost in implementing, but that's what the business pays for, what the business pays for, except that, you know, funding side of systems. Very much.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'll open up. Normally, we don't in a full board meeting, but I'll open up the general public if you keep anything brief, comment.
I actually have.
Yeah, I speak in the microphone so we can hear, either one.
I have a question. I guess it's more towards you than anyone. I mean, I, not that I'm not against, I'm not against this. Yes, I would love not to have plastic bags flying across the property and having to clean them up all the time. However, you talk about the businesses. Have you thought about the civilians, the citizens themselves? Like, I know, me personally, yes, I still, I get plastic bags. I don't get them and just throw them away. I have a very, very large dog. Doggy bags don't cut it for my dog, okay? So I have to use the big plastic bags that I get at the grocery store. So then I, if I go to get the doggy bags, the extra expenses. I know, working in the schools, we, the schools, we have asked to bring them in when we do book drives and different things. That is how we give things out. The different charities and food cupboards, they're always asking for plastic bags to give out their donations. So like, besides just the businesses, it will have a ripple effect on everybody. Have we thought about how to address that aspect of it?
Yeah, so I guess I would say that most townships that have already done this have found that a lot of people have bags that they can reuse, and if you don't, they've found success in doing bag drives, where a lot of us just have a ton of bags in our trunk or our house or whatever, and bring them either to the township building or bring them to stores, where people can just take them. But if we don't have these bags, if they're banned, then they will, with what's banned. I'm talking the little single-use plastic bags that you get at like.
The food store.
Yeah, the little ones. So I don't know what big plastic bags you're talking about.
Oh, I'm talking the ones you get at the food store, like, we use them in the books.
So you would have, you would have an option to then use a paper bag for a fee or bring your own bag, whatever bag you want to bring.
Okay, but you're not, am I making myself clear?
I understand, but this isn't, okay, this isn't for a debate tonight. This was supposed to be a presentation. It was actually supposed to be a presentation last second, so the state senator and the state rep would be here to listen to this, not for the township. But it was put on very last second for this reason, so.
Just to, for your question, we didn't always have those plastic bags. I didn't grow up with them, and yet we still managed to take care of dog poop and everything else. So we just need to go back to what we did before, and there won't be the plastic bags for that. You can use paper bags, you can use cloth bags. We'll find a way. We're more resilient, I think, than that.
Limit, I don't necessarily agree with that. We had paper bags growing up.
Paper, yes, but not plastic.
Right, but we need to, we need to go back to, we need to educate reusable bags.
Yes, no question.
Is there any other, Max? Okay, with that.
Just one, one other thing. I wonder what kind of, they're supposed to do with it, both bags, if they stay inside. They're very hard to recycle. And most of them have a mandate.
Yes.
It's not a waste of money to even talk about recycling.
Yes.
Reducing the amount of them is probably the best thing you can do.
Yeah, agreed.
I have a question. Let me ask you one question. Is there bags that are manufactured that are acceptable? You know, as, you know, they have an agent in them that makes them break down or something? I don't know.
You mean like biodegradable?
Yeah.
There isn't anything yet that is truly biodegradable, that doesn't have chemicals or things that are bad that would seep into our soil and our water at this point.
You mentioned, you know, people that clean up the dog's mess with plastic, but we have a dog park. We hand out.
Yeah, they're exempted from this ordinance, so that people can still do that. See, look, it's a win. It's a win for you. Come on.
My dog park's right next to a creek.
Hey, you're welcome to change your practice without the ordinance, but that's not, it's part of the exemption on this ordinance.
Okay, we got one more. Sir, do you have a question? Not you.
I mean, just a comment. So I would say, I'm a small business owner in Upper Moreland, and my business is pretty much food takeout, and we use a lot of plastic bags, so I'll raise my hand. We kind of hurt the environment, but I could technically be behind moving to paper because, you know, again, looking out for my kids and then my grandkids whenever they get old enough, but I can see why this is very important, so.
Thank you.
Quickly.
I think that no matter what we decide, it's important that we take the opinions of our local businesses into account because they are the lifeblood of our township, you know. We're nothing without them, so I think it's important that we take their opinion into account. Thank you.
Okay. Sean, did you have?
The other thing that inspired me out about President Fatt, I know this was a discussion in our presentation tonight. Is this, I know you said to me that you were going to put it on the agenda.
It'll be in the.
So what would, do I have to, should my office have something to prepare?
We'll let you know.
Okay.
You don't have to do anything yet.
Can I just make a quick response to Commissioner Spearing and to all of you? When the state had no human relations ordinance to protect all of our citizens here, we passed our own. I think we can do the same thing. We don't need to wait for the state. You're amazing leaders. Lead.
Okay. With that, my last closing statement is, I might be the only one against it, for one of the reasons, everything here is code enforcement. Code enforcement's asked us for another employee. We don't have the manpower in code enforcement to do this. So it'll be a feel-good, really, for the first couple of years until people start to get it, because I don't think our manager's going to put in to add this other employee that they need already. So it is a burden to them. My other comment is, I was tasked this morning, we take care of shopping centers, to hand pick a shop. to handpick a shopping center. Seven plastic bags I picked up. I picked up a full, let's say two-thirds or half a trash can of paper because I saw way more paper and plastic bottles. Those were the two main items. Receipts that blew out of people's hands, boxes that they just discarded when they walked out, and this shopping center was pretty clean to start with. So I, we do to other places if, that we have are not as clean as this. I was amazed at how well I think the education is in the township that we're in. They don't have a ban on it. But the education part, they must not be walking out with bags because we did not have many at all. But there was a lot of other stuff that blows out of hands, that, the cups. There's not even a Wawa there, there's Wawa cups, things like that. We have to educate, and our big thing that Mr. Spearing, I think, is getting to in our shopping centers is dumpsters, making sure they keep the lids closed. Because that is most of it, and circulars for food stores. That is the biggest trash that I see doing it on a regular basis, walking shopping centers. So with that, I am gonna close this, just so everybody's aware. I will put this, if you're acceptable, on your committee. And then after the committee meeting next month, we'll ask you to come up with an ordinance draft, something for us.
Please draft.
Our office will have an ordinance.
Yeah, okay, I'm just saying, we can give you all the language and.
Please send it to Matt.
He sent it to Matt. Because then we'll ask him other townships, how they did it and everything, that's our normal. So, and Sean will take care of that, that's where that'll come from.
Can I just ask one clarifying question?
Yes.
So this means you're voting on it when?
We don't know, it's going to go to a committee.
And so.
And we weren't supposed to vote this until October.
Okay, I'm just not sure of the process, so if you could just educate me really quickly.
We don't know. It goes, next it goes back to committee, it's been back in committee.
It'll be discussed in committee next week.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then from there, if there's enough support for it, it'll come out of committee. Or it could be held over for a month.
What is the committee?
It's a group of three commissioners, so we don't have a majority. We have a discussion about topics related to that committee. And if there's enough support to get it out of committee, goes to the board for an overall vote.
Okay.
That's how most municipalities work.
Okay, are you okay if I just follow up with you occasionally and see where we're at? Great, thank you all.
So all due respect, Commissioner McFattig, I don't think that this should move to CDC, even though this is an ordinance. I think it should be put in Parks and Rec.
EAC meets in CDC.
I understand that as well, but I think that there are repercussions to our parks and our systems where this has more implications to that, or public health and safety.
Public health and safety should be at the forefront of this, we're talking about.
You don't think the person is gonna have to defend it, should be here?
Person who's gonna have to.
Of enforcement.
Anybody's welcome to come to any, any meetings that we have. We can talk about this afterwards then, I think.
Okay, okay.
It'll be on the committee sometime next, this month.
Okay, now we're gonna go to our, oh, public comments, non-agenda items only. Anybody? Okay, now we're gonna go to our regular meeting. Voice from the past and the future, okay. Treasurers Activity Report.
I make a motion to approve the Treasurers Activity Report.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Any public comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstained, motion passes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting April 3rd.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Nothing, public comment? No, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstained, motion passes. Committee recommendations, finance and administrative committee, Ms. Lockhart.
The committee recommends the Board of Commissioners take action on the following. First, I make a motion to approve the reappointment of Mary Meister on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council as Award One representative to serve a new two-year term that will expire on March 1st, 2025. It's a reappointment, she already serves, it's a great group, and the Ward One rep.
She's a wonderful volunteer, she's a volunteer in the community for many years.
A second.
I got a second for her.
Now you can say what you want.
Once again, she's a wonderful person, been a great volunteer in the community. I've known her for many years, I certainly support her.
I agree. Any public comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstained, motion passes.
The committee also recommends the approval of the following checks. General Fund Check Number 137325 through 137575. Total of $1,017,830.79. Also, escrow fund checks beginning with 9588, ending with 9621, for a total of $6,139.35. And finally, liquid fuel fund check number 3063, in the amount of $299.28.
A second? Any discussion from the board? Any discussion from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstained, motion passes.
Next, I make a motion to approve Resolution R-2023-11, the Comcast Cable Franchise Agreement and Authorized Execution of the Agreement.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second, any discussion from the board?
So this was, we're part of a consortium that negotiated this agreement. It continues to be 5%. And.
Okay, anybody else on the board, questions? Anybody from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstained, motion passes.
I make a motion to approve authorizing the Township Solicitors Office to advertise eight draft ordinance, amending ordinance number 1715 related to the Volunteer Service Tax Credit Program that will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at the June 5th, 2023, regular meeting.
Second.
Motion, we have a second, any questions on this? Public comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstained, motion passes.
Sorry, I lost my spot here.
Motion to approve and ratify.
Motion to approve and ratify the opioid settlement.
We have a motion, we have a second. Discussion, it was discussed.
Okay.
It was discussed in committee.
It was all discussed in committee, yes.
Any community comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstained, motion passes.
And motion, make a motion to approve the bid results for the surplus vehicles.
We have a motion, second? We have a second, any discussion from the board?
Just they were put out the bid. Our township manager, deputy township manager recommends the sale of these vehicles. Did you want to say something else, Randy?
Sure enough, anybody from the board?
Is this list that is presented on our dais?
Yes.
Related to this? So it looks like we, we did, okay, all right, awesome.
Okay. Okay, public comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstained, motion passes.
No further business from the Finance Administration Committee.
Next, we'll have Community Development Committee, Mr. Spearing.
Okay, we're getting there. No, you have that one ready. Okay, thank you. We have no code enforcement issues, land development and subdivision applications, zero. List of upcoming zoning hearing. Want to do zoning hearing for me, please?
Yeah, sure, so we have three zoning hearing board, public hearings, this Thursday, May 11, starting at 7:30 PM in this room. First one is public hearing 23-13 for a property located 439 in the Hard Road, where the applicant is seeking relief from side yard setbacks in order to construct a two-story addition off the side of the dwelling. The second one is public hearing 23-147, which is a petition of Darden Restaurants for the property located 2402 Eastern Road, the Olive Garden location. This is for an additional wall building signage, replacement of a pylon sign in a residential district. And an interpretation of the article that is a freestanding pylon monument where other signage may contain elements directing the public to a site in addition to publicizing and identifying the business. And then the third and final one is public hearing 23-152, which is for a property located at 101 Crusant Terrace. This one is also for relief on front yard setbacks in our four zoning district.
Okay, with that, I would like this board to make a motion to send Sean to the zoning hearing board for the petition of Darden Restaurants, which is the Olive Garden. The sign will be going next to, actually, it is a residential property that's been commercially used forever. But I don't feel it should be able to be lit in the direction of the residence. Only towards Eastern Road, next door is only a gas station, that's all they gotta go by. If we don't give them that, I feel the people will be driving down, all the way down the street. They'll miss the thing, the driveway, they'll turn around, be driving back, looking for the driveway because this will be the only way to get to this restaurant if you're going northbound on Eastern Road. So I would like, I'll make it as a motion, I guess, anybody second it to send Sean for that reason. I'm not so opposed to the sign because I think it'll help driving through the neighborhood, but I don't feel they should put up with it being lit on their side.
Also.
So the sign is on Eastern Road, though?
The sign is in the driveway that's been there for the last 25 years. It is a two-foot by three-foot sign, roughly, saying entrance to Olive Garden. But they were gonna light it both sides, is what it was in the thing. But I think it should only be lit coming from Eastern Road because that's a commercial property.
That makes sense.
Shouldn't be lit from the other side.
President McFattig, I know my colleague, Mr. Ballmore, has been going back and forth with Olive Garden's attorney, and hopefully we can come to some resolution before the hearings. We won't have to hear. That'd be said, but that would be something you would accept, right? You're okay with eliminating mine, which is facing the residences, you're like, okay.
Not facing the residences.
Not facing, I got you.
There could be a sign there for the, I mean, both sides, but not lit.
I understand.
To that, towards that house, that first house.
I completely agree with that, but I'm also opposed to any relief of the size of the sign. It has to meet the minimum requirements, not to, not to go over that. Not lighting facing the residential property. Sign must be placed on the, the gas station side of the driveway, and no relief for size.
Okay.
Do we need to amend the motion?
Yeah, we'll amend the motion to that. Sean's writing it all down. Do you have a question on it? You're okay?
No, I got it.
Okay, so we have a first and a second, any other discussion from the board? Any discussion from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstained? So moved, thank you. I caught Kevin up so he can read his own computer.
I'm trying to get you attached, please. All right, okay, that takes care of item three, list of upcoming zoning hearing board meetings. Other items? Motion for Resolution R, CDC Committee recommends the approval of our Resolution R 2023, approving the request of Olive Garden Holdings LLC to transfer restaurant liquor license, number R 1480, to the Olive Garden, premises located 2402 Eastern Road, Woolley Road, PA.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any other discussion? Any public discussion? Okay, and this is, the vote is to approve this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstained, so moved, motion passed.
CDC Committee recommends the approval of Resolution R 2023-13, granting a waiver of permits fees for, oh wait, I skipped one. I'm sorry, Resolution R 2023-13, authorizing a third amusement device at 714 Eastern Road.
We have a first, we have a second, any discussion?
Yeah, this was discussed in committee. This address was on a trial period for, was, for two devices, and it needed that relief because of the location that it was in relation to a residential property. We've had a, no complaints and no incidents, so the CDC Committee is in favor of this.
Any other discussion from the board?
Yeah, so just making my comments because I wasn't, unfortunately, I wasn't at that meeting. This is in my ward. The owners of this property keep a clean property, keep good business. They've been very good partners and neighbors in working through this, so I'm for the authorization of this particular device.
Okay, any public comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstained, motion passes.
Item C, CDC Committee recommends the approval of Resolution R 2023-14, granting a waiver of permit fees to the Upper Morland Township School District for upcoming projects at the school district and the high school.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any more discussion?
This is pretty much a standard practice, the same taxing authority, and we've had a few minor discussions with the school board where we didn't agree, but overall, it's the, for the whelping of the citizens of Upper Morland.
Okay, any public comment? With that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstained, motion passes.
Item D, CDC Committee recommends the approval, authorizing Solicitor Office to advertise public hearing scheduled for June 5th, 2023, to consider zoning changes requested by BT Blair LLC for the redevelopment of property 2309, 2317 Blair Mill Road, also known as the Executive Muse.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion?
Just one. 2309, is that a Blair Mill Road address? And 2317, why do we not see the, the address on computer? It's a listed mailing address.
That I don't know, but we're just letting Sean.
These are legitimate.
Do this, but he'll make sure it is when it's.
We understand the board's intent, okay, with Matt and staff, and make sure.
Yeah, we've had the discussion in this room a couple of times. We had a presentation from the applicant. And. I suspect there's several addresses, so we'll have to get them all together. It was.
We'll let Sean clarify that when, they have to advertise it too, so. Okay. Again, again, this is only the schedule of the hearing. General public, any questions? No, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstained, motion passes.
Okay, the CDC recommends the approval, authorizing the Solicitor Office to advertise a public hearing scheduled for June 5th to consider the change requested for the township municipal complex.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second, any other discussion from the board?
This is just based on some things we plan to do. This is just based on some things we plan to do here and the acquisition of residential properties to expand our complex for less than that residential applications.
Make everything the same for our property. Any other board questions? Anybody from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstained, motion passes.
Letter F, our final item. The CDC recommends the approval, the bid results recommendations for Carson Simpson Farm Stream Bank Restoration Project.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion?
Just discussed in committee. Our, this actually came in under budget. And this is a long anticipated project that is being funded by money, funding from the YMCA with their land development. So they've been running for a couple of years and we're finally getting to it.
Any other comments from the board?
I'm hoping that this is a trend.
Under budget?
Yep.
Anybody from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstained, motion passes. Next, Public Health and Safety Committee.
Hey, thank you. Thank you very much. We have some business to bring before the board tonight. And regards to parking situations, I'm going to have our birthday celebrated right before the committee, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Whiting. Good evening. The item we have on the agenda this evening for public health and safety is a follow-up from the committee meeting on April 17th, 2023. And the committee recommends that the Board of Commissioners take action on the following. A motion to approve authorizing the Township Solicitors Office to advertise and draft an ordinance restricting parking on Barrett Road and Eastern Roads. And this would be considered by the Board of the regular meeting on June 5th, as discussed from committee.
Okay, second? Any second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any questions from the board?
No questions, but again, this is Ward Four. We're extremely lucky in our ward to have great community neighbors in our businesses. And both are on board for this and have been consulted and understand the implications for their establishments and to the neighborhood. So I'm all for this. So is.
Agreed.
So are the folks affected by it.
Any public comment? I guess mine's only that you need a life if you're bringing this this month. You could have done it next month and had a nice birthday sitting somewhere instead of in here. But.
It's business as usual. Comes with the job, it's fine.
We'll make a, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstained, motion passes. You go have your birthday cake.
You want to thank the birthday men for his birthday celebrations. Thank you. That concludes the business before the Public Health and Safety Committee tonight.
Okay, next we have Parks and Recreation Committee, Mr. Schall.
Yes, the Parks and Recreation Committee recommends the approval of Resolution R 2023-15, granting authority to submit a grant application with the Department of Community Economic Development, DCED, for Woodlawn Park.
Motion, a second. Any other discussion from the board?
I think it's worth noting that this is just for the cost of phase one, which is basically everything except for the community center and the associated parking space located on the side.
And this is for a grant that we do have money already that could be used as matching for this, that is already slated for Woodlawn Park. It just gives us a little more money to put towards it.
Yeah, keep me on that point. Commissioner Blanza requested that I put on his hat this evening and ask, are we funded for this? And where are we paying for it? But you got that, so thank you.
Good thing he's not here.
I would have bought you a Jargie of beans.
He's probably calling. Okay, anybody from the public, question on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Abstained, motion passes. Any closing commissioner comments?
I have something to say on behalf of Public Health and Safety. Once again tonight, so firsthand, how diligent our first responders are in our community. Not only that, we had Action News here tonight. So when you go home tonight, check out Action News at 11. Congratulations to all those first responders, but most of all, to the commit, the chiefs of those different departments for jobs well done. Thank you.
You are absolutely correct, Mr. Whiting.
Thank you, Commissioner Whiting. Yes, okay.
Seven more months.
Recently, there has been an increase in advertising by Aqua America regarding their infrastructure reinvestment program, acquisition of smaller water companies and dependable water quality. Would not be so sure about your water quality, especially if you live in a cul-de-sac where it didn't end in a water main. This Board of Commissioners made a sincere effort to have the water tested at one of the cul-de-sacs in Uppermoreland Township, and Aqua denied our request. The PA Department of Environmental Protection recommends that these dead-end water mains be flushed once a year, but Aqua has chosen not to do so. I am not here to say that your water at the end of the water main is not safe or of poor quality, but why would they not want to test it? In my opinion, the ultimate reason would be to be able to report better water quality by avoiding testing in these locations. They have invested a significant amount of revenue into eliminating these dead ends in some locations. But I personally would suggest that they follow the recommendations of the Department of Environmental Protection and the standards in the industry and flush every dead-end water main at least once a year. Thank you.
Okay, with that, did you write that? Is it worth it? Is board sanctioning us to send it on?
It's, yes.
Okay, is everybody in favor of this? It's just a request?
Sure.
Written out. Matt, would you take care of this? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, media adjourned.